We will now call a meeting of the Waco City Council on December 20, 2022 to order at 3:02 PM. Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda on items other than public hearings. Speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation and staff will distribute those to council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Is there anyone here to speak on a work session agenda item? Seeing no one is registered to speak, we will now recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from our city manager.
All right. Welcome, council. It's your last council meeting of the year. I didn't get the memo to bring a hat, so.
You know the rules.
I do know the rules, but I didn't get a memo, so it's okay. No, I want to congratulate you, council, for so much success throughout 2022. I did one of those. Unfortunately, we came up short of one of our goals. We did not quite get to 1,000 items on our collective agendas, and so we came up six short. I'm considering scheduling a special meeting, but Jennifer said no. No, alas, it's been a heck of a year, and so thank you all for putting one more meeting in before the end of the year. I do have two changes that I wanted to bring to your attention on the agenda today. The first is on a planning item, and Clint Peters is going to cover that later in the work session, hopefully. And then, secondly, at your place, you have an updated resolution on Resolution 967 regarding our notice of intent resolution. Today, I want to spend a few minutes recognizing employees. I actually have four of those today, which is a little more than normal, but I'm excited about it. First up, wanted to announce that, where's Dan? Hop on up, Dan. There's Dan. I wanted to announce Dan Quant will be joining the city permanently as the Director of Conventions and Tourism, beginning on January 1st at the turn of the new year. Dan's, yeah. Dan is no stranger to most in Waco at this point. He's been serving as our interim convention center director for 13 months, I believe. Dan started in the business of conventions and tourism some 41 years ago and has served on local, state, national, and even international boards of directors in the industry. Been thankful for his leadership over the last year and certainly excited to see him come onboard permanently and utilize his experience and his expertise as we take the CBB into the future. So, thanks, Dan, for stepping into that role.
Dan, congratulations.
Our second staff highlight, Ken Neely. Did Ken move on me? There he is. Hop on up, Ken Neely. Ken, also not a stranger, I don't think, to many in the room, to some in the room at least, joined the city manager's office just yesterday.
Bless y'all.
So, he's our new legislative affairs manager. He's going to take point on our state and federal legislative platforms. Ken brings, man, just a whole wealth of experience in this area. I got to first meet him in DC as he was serving as Chief of Staff and Legislative Director for Chairwoman Eddie Bernice Johnson in the House there. He also served as Chief of Staff for Congresswoman Sheila Jackson Lee. And during his time, he also served on the Hill for several other members of Congress. Mr. Neely served and worked in China in a variety of educational positions and just has a real strong resume in legislative affairs. And so I'm real excited to welcome Ken to our team and welcome him into the Waco family. Our third highlight, who I've not met yet, but I'm looking in the crowd guessing who it might be. And he tied up for today, it looks like. Our third new addition to the team is Jordan Cervantes. Jordan, will you stand for us? Thank you. Jordan just began work at the city at the beginning of December and serves as our Administrative Services Manager at the Waco Regional Airport. So, working on Huel's team at the airport. He's not a stranger to Waco. He's lived in Waco for almost seven years now, previously living in Austin. So, that was an upgrade.
Right?
Move.
Certainly.
Definitely. Has a lot of experience in project management, which we all know we're running a lot of projects at the airport right now, as well as human resources. Before serving at City of Waco, he served as Human Resources Manager at TSTC, as well as, most recently, working at the Humane Society here locally. Jordan, we're very excited to have you onboard at the airport.
Thank you.
And our last highlight is a recognition of an outgoing employee. Again, somebody that needs really no introduction. Wanted to recognize Susie Sutser for her time at Municipal Court. She served 27 years at the court and just recently announced her retirement. She's joined by her family today, which I know is so important to her, and just kind of going to recount kind of her bio and also a little story about how she's influenced my leadership here at the city. Susie was first appointed our court clerk in about this time in 1995 by the Honorable John Roberts. She served 15 years until his retirement with John, and then she served 12 years with Judge Christopher Taylor until his retirement. So, two judges. And then she served for a short time with our recently appointed Judge Bobby Garcia until her retirement on November 30th. She did a whole lot of great work in that time in the court. Certainly notably, she assisted with designing the new court facility in 2002 over on Waco Drive. She's also pretty accomplished in her field. You don't serve 27 years without that. But Susie completed the 18-month Institute of Court Management Program from the National Center of State Courts in Virginia. She obtained Level 2 of the Certified Court Clerk Program from the Texas Court Clerk Association. She completed our City of Waco Leadership Program as well. So, a very accomplished team member. She served dutifully. It's always sad to see somebody of Susie's caliber move into retirement, but I'm excited for you. You're going to get to watch a little bit of UT baseball, I understand. Yeah, I see some representation in the room here. I just want to say thank you for everything you've done, Susie. And I know the council will want to say some words as well. But as we meet as a leadership team every two weeks and sit around a table, about 30 of us, directors and police chiefs and fire chiefs and lots of accomplished individuals. And Susie was a member of that team that sat around the table, and I always appreciated that Susie, one, she spoke up because sometimes around that table, people don't speak up. I guess they're afraid to say something silly, which they ought to just watch the council meetings and watch me.
For us.
Courage.
That was a close one.
Susie was never shy to share a management tip or experience over at the court, and it always had applicability on how to lead, how to lead well, and how to enjoy people in the time of leadership. And that's not something that will be lost as she retires. It's something that'll kind of move through the organization and continue to move through our organization. So, just wanted to highlight that, Susie, and say thank you for that. At this point, I'd love to let the council or mayor say a few words about Susie.
Absolutely. Yeah, just to follow up on that, Susie, it was a pleasure working with you in Waco Municipal Court in my capacity as the Director of the Clinical Programs at Baylor Law. And I know you did so much good work to get that program up and running that ensured representation for those facing trial in Waco Municipal Court and helping get that program off the ground and get all the logistics. And it's always a pleasure working with you and so grateful for everything that you've given to the city in your long career here. So, thank you. Well-deserved retirement, and it's been a true pleasure to know you.
I guess I'll make, okay. Thank you for your service, Susie. I've gone to Municipal Court a couple of times. And always run so professional, and you make people feel comfortable. And for lack of being saying, hey, we're nervous about being here anyway, you make us feel at home. Thank you for your service to the citizens of Waco. Thank you for your service to the city of Waco itself. So, enjoy your retirement. I know you're going to be going to a lot of baseball games in Austin, but don't forget when we play Baylor, UT, where your heart is. But anyway, enjoy your retirement and congratulations on all the awards and all the accomplishments that you have done that I didn't know. Just listening to Bradley, I thought, oh, my God, we're losing a wonderful asset here. But thank you for your service so far, and enjoy your retirement and enjoy your baseball games. I'm a baseball fanatic as well.
Susie, thank you so much for everything that you have done. I'm the last one. Well, actually, Mayor's the last one. So, thank you so much for everything that you've done. One of the things that I can say about when you have, it speaks a lot to our city that you have employees that will, you know, have stayed in their position and held it down and grown and advanced and enhanced that, you know, in your case, the court for so long. That speaks to the city, but that speaks to you and your character. So, I am grateful for the foundation that you laid with your professionalism and the way you handle things. And that will speak to the court of the future. And we can't be who we are without everything that you've done. So, we are incredibly grateful for you. Enjoy your new season of retirement. You know, should you need something to do, I'm sure they'll work it out for you, but enjoy your season. And we thank you so much for everything that you've done for the city of Waco.
Susie, congratulations. It's all been said, but we're just so thankful for you. Thankful for the legacy you leave here. Thankful for the continuity that you established throughout multiple municipal judges and good work that you've done for our community. I think, when I think about doing work for this community, I think about how it really matters. This isn't just a job. These are people that are in need of a service, that are in need of being cared for, and that's what this city team does. The people around this room, we get to serve our residents. And sometimes, one of your most vulnerable, frustrating, challenging times is when you have become in trouble and are at Municipal Court, or whether you're dealing with the bar, or whether you're dealing with whoever might be coming through those doors. You leave a legacy of not only professionalism, but kindness and thoughtfulness. It was such an honor to get to meet your family. I'm so excited about you getting to have a great, restful holiday season with that team and look forward to you getting a good time with them. And again, congratulations, and we're going to miss you so much.
Thanks, council, for those comments. We do have two public hearings on the agenda today. 963 is a hearing to receive comments on our 2021-22 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. And the second public hearing will be covered, as I mentioned earlier, by Clint in the work session here in a few minutes. Wanted to highlight just a couple of our 25 resolutions that are on the agenda. The first is Resolution 967, which covers our notice of intent and debt cell schedule. Council was briefed earlier this year by staff and the city's financial advisor during the, I think it was a December 13th budget and audit meeting. This notification that's on your agenda today allows the city to issue up to $200 million in new debt for the city's capital improvement program, our CIP, of which about $40 million will go for public improvements in the downtown area, supporting investments by Baylor and Catalyst Urban Development along the river. We also have about $63 million for various projects in engineering to support the fire department, parks and recreation, streets and traffic improvements, as well as new facilities at the zoo. The third major section of that notice of intent is our enterprise funds, which are the city activities that function more like a business. Will receive more than $90 million to improve our solid waste services, water utilities, wastewater services, as well as drainage systems. Our second resolution highlighting today is Resolution 971, which covers an agreement with yours Truly Custom Homes LLC. This, again, this was briefed at the November budget and audit meeting with the council. And it's really, wanted to highlight it because it's a great example of a collaboration project that'll assist in addressing the needs that are in our strategic housing plan. This agreement will approve an amount not to exceed $910,000 for assistance in installing a new water line, sewer line, and street, which ultimately will result in the construction of a mixed-income neighborhood, which will have 21 homes, 11 of which will be affordable homes to be purchased on Gurley Lane. Ultimately, the developer will invest more than $4 million of private investment as well to support this project. I was quoted in the paper really well, Rhiannon. I think it was you. Really wide-taught phrased it. I think I said, I'd love to have about 100 more of these, if resources allowed, because this is a great move for our strategic housing plan, to see homeownership available for more and more Wacoans.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you so much for highlighting this. Thank you for our housing staff and team. We have all, all districts have committed, you know, understood the commitment of housing in our community, affordable, attainable housing in our community. And entities like this and developments like this allow our communities that we build to be reflective of the communities that we live in. So, you know, I think it's imperative that we do market-rate housing, affordable housing, you know, in combined neighborhoods, because that's what the world is. And so, when we function in that manner, then we can set a tone and a precedent for who and what we are.
Yeah, I think that this is such an embodiment for a priority of us, is to try to bring diverse tools to the table to really ensure that we are doing all that we can do to create a climate that has affordable housing in it. So, I'm really appreciative of our staff's work, and this is going to be something that we're going to continue to do, is put tools from a toolkit out there and see what we can do to really continue to take affordable homeownership and affordable housing in general seriously and make sure that people are able to really thrive in our community by the access to these tools that we have.
Definitely, definitely. One more highlight, council, and it's Resolution 972, I believe. It's the first action, it relates to our Pavilion Parking Garage. There you go. This is the first action item following your selection of Austin Commercial as our Construction Manager at Risk, our CMAR. This first item provides for civil and foundation work of the Foster Pavilion Parking Garage at a guaranteed maximum price of $4.24 million. We're awarding this work in phases, and the reason for that is allows a contractor to begin work in the initial phase as design work on the next phases is completed, which better enables the city to meet its obligations to have parking available in January of 2024, which, as we watch the Foster Pavilion construction progress, can't believe I'm saying this out loud, but it appears more and more likely that there might actually be basketball played in that facility in January 2024. So, parking would be a good thing to have. You know, people are going to want it. So, we're structuring this in a way that allows us to meet that contractual obligation we have to Baylor. Definitely appreciate the staff's work and council's commitment to the approach here. I think it's going to be, it's going to enable us to meet our obligations. On the agenda today, we do have seven ordinances. Three are first readings and four are second readings. I'll briefly cover the first reading items, and then we'll get into work session. The first ordinance I wanted to go over is 987, which amends the exceptions within the smoking regulations regarding cigar lounges, hookah bars, and hookah lounges to incorporate definitions and requirements for standalone buildings operating with separate air ventilation systems. So, it's a small exception to the smoking regulations there. Second ordinance is 988, which merges and consolidates classifications and pay grades within Waco Fire Department. Chief Summers is going to brief us on this in a few moments in the work session. I look forward to that. And lastly, ordinance 989 authorizes a developer participation agreement with 701 Washington. And what it does is allows, it gives a city the ability to participate in the oversizing of improvements to increase sewer capacity, which should allow for further capacity to support downtown development nearby. With that, Mayor, that completes a lengthy report, but important report, because we got to highlight some new staff members.
Can I say something? And I kind of thought you would say something, Bradley, but I'll say something. I want the folks to understand that the work and all this that goes behind all these resolutions and ordinances and projects that are bid out. And I know this council and other councils before have always stressed local businesses. So, I just want to tell you that I appreciate a lot of these projects that are being let out to local organizations and construction people, even though, and I know it says lowest and best bid, but to me, the best bid is a local construction company or organization, because that gives out a lot of work for a lot of our local folks, and in turn, they're spending the money here. So, thank you, Bradley, and our staff for remembering that the council likes to have local. I know sometimes we can't, and I understand that, but when we do, I want to thank you for that, Brad, you and the staff.
All right. The consent agenda includes Resolutions 2022, 965 through 986. Are there any council items that council would like to remove, are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? Now, the consent agenda will include Resolution 2022, 965 through 986, except for 972. Council Member Boarderood has filed an affidavit of substantial interest on each of this item. The next item on the agenda is work session 957 through 960. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
Sure, Mayor. Thank you. Our first work session is, Chief Summers is going to come up and give us a briefing on the merging and consolidation of Waco Fire classifications. This is on the heels of a recent commission meeting that Chief presented at. So, we thought it'd be a good chance for you to hear a further briefing on the matter. I wanted to say, and I think it's, council probably recognizes it, but I'm a strong proponent of the Chief being able to manage his or her department as needed. And so, I think this is moving that in that direction, and look forward to the briefing, Chief.
Thank you. Before I get started, I just want to say that I'll be reading this document for a couple of reasons. I can't get kind of down in the weeds as it relates to fire-related issues. And secondly, I want to make sure that I speak to you in layman terms as much as I possibly can. So, Mayor and council, it is a pleasure to be here before you today to talk about the classification and promotional system within the Waco Fire Department. Our city's current system is inconsistent with what other cities in the nation have. It is outdated and inefficient, and I'm proposing a process that addresses those shortcomings and is consistent with industry standards. We presented this new system to the Civil Service Commission on November 29th. The Commission voted 3 to 0 to approve the changes necessary in the local civil service rules to correct the deficiencies that we will talk about today. We spent time going into great detail with the Civil Service Commission, and they did the work of making an evaluation that the proposed system would be appropriate moving forward. What we're asking of you today as a governmental body is to place the authorized sworn positions into the appropriate rank structure approved by the Civil Service Commission. I have two charts that I'm going to share with you today. One is the system we're moving from, and then I will share with you the system we're moving to. You'll see on your screen the system that we're moving from. The chart that you're looking at ranks the classifications as they stand today and represents the outgoing rank and classification system. This organization chart actually places the lowest rank at the top of the chart to show the flow through the organization as employees move to higher positions in the department. Looking at this chart, the thing that poses the largest problem is that for each of the boxes on the screen, there's a separate and distinct test, as if each position were in an island in and of itself. This is despite the fact that each row on the chart represents positions that are of the same rank in the department. To better understand this concept, look on the right-hand side of the chart. Find the box titled Fire Prevention Specialist, Grade 2. Notice that in the hierarchy of the department organization chart, that is at an equivalent level as the Fire Equipment Engineer, Grade 2. Both of these positions are fed by the rank of firefighter. This means that an employee moving into the rank of Fire Prevention Specialist could have just left their firehouse where they worked alongside the person moving into the rank of Fire Engineer, which is also a Grade 2 firefighter. However, under the system we're moving away from, once that firefighter takes the test for Fire Prevention Specialist and enters into another division that is not working at the firehouse like the Fire Equipment Engineer is, the Fire Prevention Specialist can't perform any of the duties that the engineer might. Somehow, because that person now has the title of Fire Prevention Specialist, even though technically they are a Grade 2 position in the fire department, they aren't capable of doing something as simple as driving a fire truck, which is a core duty of the Fire Equipment Engineer. On the other end, we can't call on the Fire Equipment Engineer to go and share their incredible expertise and experience in a role that might provide fire prevention information to the public regardless of the need of the city. A potentially more disturbing effect of this outdated system can be seen by looking up one more rung on the org chart and seeing the Fire Training Lieutenant spot that is also marked with a Grade 4 in the box. This individual can spend all of their time training the personnel in the fire department, including the fire personnel who occupy the fire station lieutenant spot on the same level to the left of the org chart, also a Grade 4 officer. But yet, the Fire Training Lieutenant would not be allowed to go out into the field and perform those duties that they teach each day, day in and day out, because they only tested for the Fire Training Spot, which under the outgoing system prevents them from performing the duties of the Fire Station Lieutenant. You could pick any box on the screen. Deployees in that classification are excluded from working in any other box unless they go take a test related not only to the rank, but also the job duties. Next slide, please. The incoming system solves these issues and others. I'm now showing you that the solution that was adopted by the Civil Service Commission, it is used by virtually every fire organization in the country. It is recognized as best practice, provides the most efficiency, and ensures public safety. As you can see from this slide, now everyone who is a Grade 4 officer in the fire service will carry the same title that is according to their rank in the department. A Waco Fire Lieutenant is a lieutenant is a lieutenant, is a lieutenant despite the fact that their assignment may be in a different location than other lieutenants. Under the newly adopted system, we will be able to address additional issues caused by the outgoing system by ensuring that all the members of each rank in the department have the global skills necessary to ensure public safety and to be the best leaders for the organization. Before I started this project, I went around to every fire station, told them about what I was proposing. I heard their concern about anything that has changed from what they've been doing. I also reached out to fire departments across the country and talked to my peers in the Metropolitan Fire Metropolitan Fire Chiefs Association. Not one single department I talked to had a system resembling the outgoing system that we would segregate work not only by rank, but also by classification within the rank. Every department I talked to has a system that provides for promotion by rank with global accountability in the department. You know, I understand that there's reluctance because the new system feels like a change, and change is hard to accept. I also know that this department is made up of the finest men and women that I've ever had the chance to work with, and I consider it a privilege and an honor to work with them every day. However, my duty as a fire chief is not only to do what's in the best interest of the fire personnel, but I also have the duty of city management to each of you and to the residents of the City of Waco who entrust us with the resources necessary to ensure public safety. The process on the scene, which has been adopted by the Civil Service Commission and which already falls under the authority granted to me as a fire chief in the current collective bargain agreement under, under management rights, provides the most efficient method, abides by industry standards, adheres to best practices, and helps to ensure public safety. So if there are any questions that you may have of this proposal, I'd be more than happy to answer the questions that you may have.
Any questions for the Chief?
Yes, Chief, thank you for this presentation, and I think the illustration on the org chart is, is pretty self-evident in that it looks like this will give the department more of a maximize use of the fire, firefighting force that you're going to be able to employ as many firefighters as possible for multiple purposes, as opposed to having kind of siloed off firefighters in, in different categories. Is that fair to say?
That is absolutely correct. It gives me the opportunity to have lateral transfers, which is covered under the collective bargain agreement. It also gives me the opportunity to put people where I need them, where the need is.
And this also, I imagine, would be good for mobility within the Fire Department. You don't end up, if you're a training specialist, only being able to do that line, but the chance to move up or move over as needed, or as, you know, the demands of, of the department, or your individual health or ability dictate the ability for an individual firefighter to, to kind of move mat laterally or vertically.
That is absolutely correct. Professional development will be not based on where you are, it can be across all disciplines within the organization. And when you talk about an individual that might have a, some type of medical issue right now, if I needed to put a individual in, let's say, fire prevention, which is a forty-hour work week, because they've got a disability that they can't work at the fire station, if I don't have a position in that, in that, in that classification, I won't be able to do it. With this process here, with this proposal here, we'll be able to do that.
And, and just to reiterate too, you said that our system is somewhat of an outlier in that the mainstream and the best practices for most fire departments across the nation are adopting this, I don't know if we want to call it a unitary system, but where promotion has incorporates all of the training necessary at each, at each grade. Is that fair to say?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
I, I don't have any questions, but I, I do want to say that I've always been proud of our Fire Department. They've always had a strong firefighters that go and do what they have to do. And I understand your position. I also understand theirs. Change is not easy and sometimes not wanted, but I understand about that. You're looking at somebody that's been here a long time, so that's a change, you know? But I understand what you have to do, and I know our firefighters have always been a great Fire Department here in Waco and surrounding communities. So whatever it takes for you to come in and do what you have to do to make us better, then of course I'm for it. And like I said, I understand about change and not wanting it sometimes, but sometimes it's the best. So I leave that to you. It's your department, you're the Fire Chief, and I certainly will support your efforts in this endeavor here and this, what you want to do in your, in your department. So I just want the firefighters to know that as council members, we feel like they're the best in the country. And when you have a fire in your house or your neighborhood, they come in and do their job, and it's always great to see them coming in in that big fire truck. So anyway, thank you, Chief, for your presentation. I will support your efforts and just so that the firefighters know that we're not turning our backs to them in their old ways that you said were outdated, but that you have come in and said, we need to do this. And I'm sure they will come along and still be the best in the country.
Absolutely, I appreciate that. And I will say this, you know, we're talking about a small percentage of positions. The vast majority of our vacancies occur at the fire station where everybody loves to work. So it's really not going to affect them like they think it might affect them. So, but I get that. Change is hard to accept sometimes, but we're talking about a very small piece of this pie, and I don't think it's going to have that effect on them at all. I really don't.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for this presentation. I'm going to kind of double down on Councilmember Rodriguez and, and I know all of my council members in leadership in our public safety officers and, and are the, one of the most important people, you know, the most important people, group of, of Wacoans in everything that they do. I also know that, that when you get into new things, it gets a little squishy. But I, the, the format that was in place, that was done in the seventies? Okay. So a wise person said, if nothing changes, nothing changes. And, and I think that we are at a position in, in, in this city that we are, you know, destined for greatness and, and the next level and to serve as a model city for other cities to follow. We've already done that in many things, and we continue to do that in the way we serve. What is the terminology that you all just received? The class what?
Class one, ISO Class One.
That right there. Not everything, not, not, not a whole lot of cities have that, and we do. And we have that because of the dedicated men and women that work in the Fire Department. The way we lead as a council is collectively, and we hear from our leaders and, and our leadership, you know, take, take the opinions that we have and come to a consensus about what works and what's best for the city. And I think that with the hope, I hope the Fire Department knows how much the City of Waco, how much they mean to the City of Waco, and we have tried to show that as a council through equipment, new, new equipment and trainings and other thing, you know, the list of things that I know just in the almost, the five years that I've served, and I'm sure Alice could give a laundry list. Tenure, tenure! But, you know, of the things that we've done to show that we are with our Fire Department. And, you know, I know this, this may feel like a, it may feel, not like a slight or, or, or squishy, but again, it's just unnew. And I think that if every Fire Department in the country is in this alignment, I don't know that we would be wrong to do it this way. We, I'm sure we support you in, in, in the efforts to say, we're here to make the landing a little softer, but if we are to be the city on the hill that we are destined to be, then we've got to do the things that work best for our community, which is working best for the department, which is working best for the city. So I, I support your efforts and change and am happy to, to do whatever we need to do to see it through.
I'll say one last thing. I've, I've been doing this for four decades, and April first nineteen eighty-three was my first day. And every day that I come to work, it feels like that. I truly enjoy this, and what I want to do for this city is always provide them with industry standards and best practices. That's my goal, to provide for you every single day, and I appreciate your support in this endeavor.
I'll just quickly wrap up by saying, it's all been said, I, this council supports our Fire Department, will continue to support our firefighters who put their lives on the line. We have much thanks and gratitude to our Fire Department and their families. And again, that support will not wane. Thank you, Chief, for really examining best practices and working strategically with the Commission to present that to them first and then to us, and we look forward to seeing these best-in-practice, best-in-class models being rolled out. So thank you for your time.
Stay tuned. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Hey, Tom.
I know, he knows.
Doors open, still here, public here.
Hold the door open. He's here, present.
We're gonna, we're gonna start a beverage service for Josh, I suppose.
For our four council member meeting.
Anybody's wondering what that whole thing was about with, with six council members, the minute one of them leaves the dais, we no longer have a meeting going on. And so Josh, if you need a beverage or any council member, let me know.
Yeah, one of us will go get you a beverage.
What you need, yeah, you just tell me what you need and we'll, we'll get it.
Why don't we take a quick break after this work session? So we'll go, this work session, then we'll take a quick little.
What a good idea, sir.
That's why he's the mayor.
Mayor. That and his good looks, right? I noticed something Jennifer didn't notice. Somebody write that down, that happened today. Our next presentation, it's going to be quite a lot of fun, I think. It's a discussion of our citywide trails master plan. And, you know, I know our, our Parks team and our consulting team has been hard at work at this for, for well over a year, I think. Tom will tell us more about it in a minute. But it's, it's a really strong move towards a very vibrant and active trail system. I think we're really planting some really good seeds with this plan, which we did attach to the agenda items. If anybody wants to see the draft plan, it is online on, on our agenda packet. So Tom Bock, our Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation, is going to walk us through the findings, recommendation, and, and also recap what would end up being a pretty large community input process. Ultimately, this plan's going to guide our future investments in trails, and I think it's a, it sets a, sends a clear message to development community watching that we're interested in hiking bike trails, we're interested in connectivity and last mile transportation even. So I'll let Tom take it from here.
Absolutely. Thank you, City Manager, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for your time today. We really, it's been a team effort, not just in the Parks Department, but working with our partner departments and organizations. And I'm really thrilled to be able to bring this to you today to capstone essentially our long process to build a tool that can help us shape that future. So without ado, I will jump into kind of the overview here that takes us back to the beginning and kind of lays out the, the roadmap. So we'll talk about those origins, what was the project basis here? What was the scope and approach that we got engaged with a consultant on, and what were we trying to build? How did the community shape that vision? And then ultimately, let's discuss the exciting vision for what that network looks like and how we start to eat that elephant. And then really, we have to talk about what are the other components necessary for success of that vision? And then finalizing on the last steps, the next steps. So the, the basis, I think it, it bears going back to maybe twenty fourteen when the last leg of the Riverwalk Downtown Loop was successfully constructed, tying together for the first time both banks of the Brazos River through the downtown corridor, providing that exciting connection for the first time to the, the newly minted McLean Stadium. And I know all of this has been subsequently interrupted by our growing pains and, and fast development on the freeway and other projects. Totally worth it, but for that moment in time, that, that day in the sun, it was like the first sort of tangible local example of, wow, this is what a, a true network of trails in a downtown in a thriving community can do for us. And started to shape a lot of discussions and visions and appetite for, how do we build out from that? How do we grow out from that success story? And the why really echoes a lot of council's own stated objectives and priorities, that healthy and active lifestyle, what does that mean for connecting neighborhoods and districts with equity and equal access to these improvements and investments? And then not only those effects, but what does it mean for our cultural landscape as well, our art and enjoyment and, and its impact on these experiences for, for the day-to-day? But then also that synergy between environment and economic development as well. So, so these trails end up touching a lot of these categories and can be an excellent investment for our community goals and our long-term health. What's also unique about this style of trail system is, is what we locally have been calling our metropolitan trail system, but what that breaks down to is it's this special intersection of transportation and recreation. So it's not just one or the other, and that combination also creates a unique opportunity to leverage, there's a, there's a lot of federal opportunities and state opportunities that come into play for projects of this nature, and in many cases, construction funding up to eighty percent is available. So it's a deal that can't be beat. It requires planning and strategy and, and community discussion to compete well for those dollars, and that, that's a big piece of what this plan is, is trying to provide. So, so what was the scope? How, how big of an area are we talking about? What did we ask our consultant to endeavor to do for us? Well, number one, we wanted to bring in a team that had demonstrated experience and expertise in a variety of environments, not just in Texas, but all over the country, and, and a proven track record with what are the national best practices? These are things that it's hard for any one community to stay on the cutting edge of. So we wanted to make sure to bring in the right team for that. And I failed to mention on the front end, but Half Associates was the team that we brought in, coming from much of our success with them on the riverfront. So they brought in a specialized team of planners for this multi-use system, and they brought a, a lot of great analysis and insights. And that, and that's, that's the component that certainly in-house, we were under-equipped to provide independently. We wanted to bring in a team that could look at this with fresh eyes, and they did so. And, and so when they asked us how big of an area to think about, we showed them this map essentially of saying, hey, we've got four disparate chunks, and at a minimum, we'd like those all to be interconnected and speaking to each other, but we also need to know what's going on in our neighboring communities and with our adjacent municipalities as well as agencies. And so that launched us into the, the project process, which of course begins with data gathering and a lot of analysis, but throughout, community engagement and stakeholder engagement was essential. So particularly getting into that phase two with the visioning in the winter and spring of twenty-one, we had several participant groups with us in both virtual and in-person formats due to, that also coincided with much of the COVID experience. So we've had some challenges, but as the phase three composition transpired, we were able to get a lot of great feedback by hosting these drafts on our website, and here we are now in the approval stages. So today's presentation reflects the outcome of all the feedback to date. We've got a draft that we feel pretty confident, we feel comfortable and confident bringing to you today. We respect Yell's feedback at this point, though, so in January, we can come back with the ultimate resolution to request adoption. Project participation, public engagement, as I said, like that is the foundation of a planning document that produces the buy-in necessary to attack this strategically. And what that was founded on, we initiated focus group meetings at the very beginning. We had four separate groups composed of our parallel and aligned organizations out there, including transportation groups, but also agencies such as the Army Corps of Engineers, such as our utility partners. We, we were really trying to establish connections into groups that can pull alongside us and provide creative solutions that perhaps we hadn't considered in the past. Following focus group meetings to start to build- hadn't considered in the past. Following focus group meetings to start to build those partnerships, we also set up a static trail advisory committee that met with us throughout the duration of the project to help shape the, the language used, help set the goals, and help provide us that review feedback throughout. And then also, as I mentioned, we did utilize a significant amount of virtual meetings, web-hosted content, interactive content online. But we were also very intentional about getting in front of the people face to face. And so one of the fun things that transpired in that part of the project was trailside events. We were able to staff trailside tents and get public engagement along each of the corridors that we currently have. And this transpired over a couple weeks, a couple weekends particularly. But we had great participation from all of our trail corridors. So that was a fun way to get out in front of people and let them know what we're working on. And, and what that produced, that, that public dialogue, we were able to work with our stakeholder, or I'm sorry, we were able to work with our trail advisory commission, committee to distill that down to some of the key points of what the vision really represents. And it echoes a lot of, again, those council goals, but promoting, leaning into that outdoor recreation, fitness and wellness idea. And really celebrating the idea that one of the great things about these trail corridors is that they're, in many cases, particularly the Riverwalk, they're free of an overabundance of vehicle and street intersections. That's really nice to be able to go for a jog with small kids and not have to worry about intersections. So trying to prioritize that as a, as a value. But then also really celebrating some of the unique values, or some of the unique opportunities that Waco has throughout the city with these natural features and these cultural resources. So that, that cast the initial broad vision. It distills down into some further guiding principles. But what it's all about, what it all really means for, for these participants is, how do we use trails to create positive memories? And again, like that, that is the, the common language way of getting back to what we started with of the intersection of recreation and transportation. How do we build this infrastructure to create positive memories while we're out there? There's a, there's a number of ideas that came into the discussion when we really tried to, tried to pick apart, what are the essential ingredients to creating corridors like that? Connectivity is key. Obviously, creating an environment that people feel safe in is key. Lighting is a big piece of that. Safe intersections, intentional design is a big piece of that. And having legible wayfinding that corresponds with good emergency services is very important to that. So we got a lot of great feedback on that topic. But then also making sure that we had access to and from all of our neighborhoods, all of our different districts. It's very important to make sure that we're serving everyone. But then also very key illustration that came out of it is corridor availability. We need to capitalize on what we have and we need to, need to be able to capitalize on opportunities as they arise. So these were all points of feedback and strong recommendation from our public engagement groups. And we took that and ran with it. And our consultant helped navigate us into, okay, from a nuts and bolts standpoint, we've got two trail typologies that flesh out a system like this. We've got greenway corridors, and we've got roadside corridors. And so these have been highlighted in yellow and purple on this slide to help illustrate what we're about to see from a, from a network scale on the next slide. So you see solid yellow and dashed yellow. Solid yellow represents, these are the greenway corridors we have existing, the dashed are recommended extensions of that. And similarly, purple would be any roadside corridor we already have, and dashed being the, the proposed corridor extensions. So this is a single image to kind of start to get to the scale and the scope of what we're talking about. One thing that is helpful and illustrating, though, is it's very challenging to get into our existing built city fabric, our built neighborhood fabric. And that's why one of our key partners in this process, one of our key seats at the table, it was a representative from our Metropolitan Planning Organization throughout. We had a lot of help. And we were able to cross-reference our discussions with the, the wisdom of their discussions to develop the active transportation plan. Now, this tool is a, a very important thing for us all to stay coordinated on because the active transportation plan is also leveraged to inform the cities, the public works departments, sidewalk priorities and other efforts. So we want to make sure that we're all working from the same plan. And the, the MPO has been excellent in, in helping us do that. So this, this helps represent and explain the story to what strategies can help us get in neighborhoods. So it's gonna be a combination of infrastructure elements, but the, the two systems talk to each other. And what, what a, a, a goal and ambition such as the, the map that we just looked at, what that compels is kind of two tracks. We, we propose an investment program, obviously, to build what we're talking about. But to be successful, there are also a, a number of policy program recommendations. We need to build the, the policy infrastructure as well as the relationship infrastructure to succeed here. And so we'll talk about those recommendations in the coming slides. First and foremost, on, on our team's mind, though, as we started to understand the, the type of system we were trying to build, how do we get there? How do we decide what order, what priority order to recommend? And so we kind of looked at it in three chunks. The first one is the one to five-year time scale. The next is the ten, the five to 10, and then the 10 and beyond. So we've got three tiers here. The first one really recognizes the highest value is extending out from the successful Riverwalk corridor and where possible linking into, or tying together the disparate pieces that we have. So obviously, there's a lot of development happening at both ends of the Mary Avenue corridor. And so a linkage there to the riverfront was reflected as a high priority. But also, we've got development ongoing right now for the MKT corridor in East Waco. There's a very small segment there that could greatly improve access by connecting along Mill Avenue to an existing trailhead at the river. So that's one of our top-tier recommendations. Then obviously trying to make connectivity to the dam trail to, to leverage that as part of the city fabric and extending beyond. So that's, that's what we, that's what we recognize as the low-hanging fruit, the top-tier priorities to pursue funding for. And then looking a little bit beyond, we see the Boski River corridor with its connections to the Mammoth Site is very important. The Brazos and MKT extensions, those help make the trail network in that quadrant of the city more robust and connected. Central corridor expansions as well, building on the success of that Mary Avenue corridor. And then also extending out from the Cotton Belt Trail. That was a, a great outcome of our outreach to neighboring communities. We recognized that the McGregor community has been acquiring rail corridor in their direction as well, with the hopes for a long-range regional trail connection. So I think that's, that's a wise investment. And then looking into that wider future, the shelf life of most plans is, is maybe 10 years. And so why is it valuable to look beyond 10 years in this exercise? Because it's helpful to know what that whole vision is. Because again, the best time to make an investment in land banking or, or corridor acquisition is when the opportunity arises. It can also inform our development code and other things to preserve space. But we need to know what that vision is, even though we probably will need to come back with an updated plan before we realize all of this. So this is just helpful to establish that what we're trying to build is a hub-and-spoke system. So we need not only these spines of corridors, we also need loops of connectivity around. And then the neighborhood linkages become very important as well. So trying to illustrate what the, what the full vision is. And again, to, to come back to, what are the essential ingredients that make the experience worthwhile? There, there are general investments that are must-haves that go with each of these projects. So branding and wayfinding are essential. Wayfinding comes into the safety and helping navigate not only emergency responders, but also helping navigate the folks that you're trying to meet up with, things like that. So it's part of the package to make it successful, as are the creature comforts at trail sides and waysides. We've got to have some amenities and some sort of systematic approach to where our main trailheads and parking are located, restrooms are located, and some just rest stations with benches. I mentioned lighting and safety are crucial elements for the healthy use of a trail system, as are an awareness and embrace of emerging technology. So the work of our, our IT department, excuse me, the work of our IT department and others to establish, where do we need fiber? Where do we need a more robust capacity for not only public Wi-Fi, but cameras and other things like that that can serve the management of a trail system, but also serve the users of a trail system as well? So thinking about the technology overlay on the trail corridor as well. Special use trails in Cameron Park garnered a lot of discussion in this public engagement process. The key recommendation coming out of this document is those rustic-oriented trails are a huge recreational asset to Cameron Park. They're kind of outside the scope of this planning and vision because they're not, you know, your typical transportation corridors. But this plan does recommend investing in a, a, a project-specific plan for those trails, the healthy management and coordination of those trails, because there's a lot of point of intersection. But then also, one of the fun things that we were surprised and really excited to have come out of our stakeholder group, having the participation of the Army Corps of Engineers. We had Mike Champagne, who's the Army Corps of Engineers Lake Manager for Lake Waco. And he encouraged the group to recognize that, of course, in so many communities across the country, a trail system that circumnavigates your lake or your reservoir is a huge asset and feature. And while much of Waco is not yet densifying development on the far side of the lake, the time for these discussions is now. And considering that, a legacy trail that can be in that 10-plus time, 10-plus-year timeframe, that was, that was a recommendation and encouragement from him that we were very delighted to have. And so I think that's a wise recommendation. And even if it is only implemented in the short term as a soft-surface trail system, when the residential development comes one day, the corridor being established already would be an easy upgrade. So these are just some, some images, imagery examples that the consultant provided about some differing trailhead typologies. Not every trailhead is going to have parking or restrooms, but thinking through intentionally what those essential amenities are to promote steady usage of the trails. But also, one of the key, key categories of intentional design becomes safe intersections. Because we are still gonna have some street crossings and trail crossings at street grade. We want to make sure we've done everything we can to promote the public safety for our trail users. And they had a lot of great recommendations. And that ties in neatly into one of our top priority corridors. We were able to look a little deeper at that Mary Avenue corridor in anticipation of what may come and try to understand, what will it take to, to develop a spine from the Riverwalk along that Mary Avenue corridor? And really, it boiled down to three different trail typologies. So on the left, you see the green dashed line. That is just a, a greenway trail along Waco Creek, has some excellent opportunities with exposed limestone and the natural beauty there. From about 17th Street to 8th Street, that's gonna be pretty typical of our roadside corridor. What gets interesting, and every plan for the, the downtown area has touched on this in some form or fashion over the past several years. But that festival concept, how do you, how do you plan that carefully and orchestrate that carefully to promote flexible use? You know, so the occasional closure for the festival function, but also that consistent use as a trail corridor. So they did some analysis and made some recommendations on that. It coordinates and speaks similar language to the downtown implementation plan. So there's been a lot of coordination there. But anyway, this Mary Avenue corridor is a, is a top priority. We recognize it in at least three significant chunks of specific character. System enhancement projects are, they're represented here to remind me and remind me to talk about the fact that while we're focusing primarily on growth of the trail network, it can't be at the expense or neglect of the existing trail infrastructure that we have out there. And, and that system, as it ages, has needs. One of the recommendations that came up, that would have been included as a top-tier priority, but the city has already initiated work on it, is the redevelopment of the oldest portions of the Riverwalk. So particularly from Franklin to Baylor Law School, that would have been one of the top-tier priorities that our trail advisory committee recommended. They were delighted with the announcement about this time last year that, hey, let's go ahead and do it. So we're very excited to continue that work. But we've also taken a look at our other trail systems and made recommendations as represented here. And then this gets into, okay, what, what do we mean when we say policy and regulation tools? So many other communities, it's very prevalent, they have not only parkland dedication, but trail dedication and construction ordinances in their development code. This is something that we plan to lean into and work with our partner departments to try to advance the cause of, to bring something to you in the near future that makes some recommendations about how we can work with our development partners. We've, it just, just in the time that this plan has been drafted, we've actually had several different development teams reach out to the Parks Department to request dialogue about the, the draft, or in some cases, they wanted a preview copy. So that, this is, trail systems of this nature, again, because of that recreation value, that community value, developers across the country recognize that this is a, this is an amenity value that they can market. So there's, there's a receptivity here, and we don't want to miss that. So we want to continue working with those visionary developers. We want to build a, a fair system that helps explain what, what Waco needs. And, and we want to just make sure that our ordinances reflect that. So that's one example. Hours of operation is kind of a nuts and bolts thing, but our parkland ordinance talks about hours that end at midnight and start again at, I think, 6:00 AM. If, if we're talking about a transportation alternative network, we probably need to flesh out a specific description of what our expectations are for this trail system. And then also a fun category is the micro-mobility and automated vehicles category. It's important to note here, like there's, there's a lot of concern. There's a need for careful coordination. We do need some greater specificity, specificity in the, in the ordinance. But this also reflects a, a comfort and amenity category for a lot of trail users. And as our system grows, it can also be a real resource in getting people on the trail system because they'll have a longer range. I, for one, do not pedal bike uphill. So an e-bike or similar is what I'm gonna need if I'm gonna be riding my bike out to Cotton Belt Trail. But anyhow, this is a special subject of discussion in the code that we'll need to refer, we'll need to return to. And then from an operation standpoint, of course, our team in Parks and Recreation and working with others, we've got to make sure that we've got a maintenance system in place that can keep up with this, developing standardized procedures, building up the workforce as needed as we continue to grow. And then also have a transparent explanation of as trails are, as trail corridors are acquired or developed, we're not always gonna be able to develop to the top tier fully lit on day one. For example, Cotton Belt Trail only has lighting at the, the bridge crossing. So defining some set levels of service, depending on what level of implementation we're ready to jump into at the time of construction. And then lastly, but perhaps most importantly, to realize this vision, many communities have leveraged strong relationships with outside partners. Trail stewardship groups are very common in many cities. And in the near future, that might be something that we can talk about here. So we've got open eyes about that. Half Associates brought us a lot of great discussion. They, they guided us through our community-driven visioning process. And I feel like we've got a, a pretty good roadmap and homework list. So with that, that's, that's the quick overview. We've also attached the draft plan to make that available if there are specific concerns or, or things that you want to look into closer. But with the, the timing and process that we envision, we do plan to come back with a resolution in January requesting formal adoption. What that allows us here is any feedback that we receive tonight, or in the interim, we can incorporate into the document so that you're approving at that time a document that every- a resolution in January requesting formal adoption. What that allows us here is any feedback that we receive tonight or in the interim, we can incorporate into the document so that you're approving at that time a document that everybody has gotten comfortable with and bought into. So with that, I'm going to stop talking. I'm going to turn it over for questions. I really appreciate, appreciate y'all's support and patience.
Questions, comments?
I have just one, and I've been trying to look through here. And, you know, the Floyd Casey development also had some bike trails and future connections to downtown. I don't see it here, or unless it's here and I just missed it.
It is. Let me, let me page to this real quick. So it's, so it's just off the page.
You need to make it bigger for me.
Let me get that. So in the Tier One development, if you're looking, I don't know if I can use my mouse here. But do you see? Oh, yeah. So Down by Valley Mills. Down, down, down. Who's mousing? Is that me now? Okay, great. So right here, so this is where the Floyd Casey development touches Valley Mills.
Okay, that's why I missed it.
And so this is Waco Creek tying in then to property that the city owns. So that, that is part of the Tier One Trail Corridor Recommendation.
Thank you, Tom.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're excited for that development.
I am too. Um, thank you, Tom, for the presentation. What, what is the, who makes up the Trail Advisory Committee?
So, so we had representatives from Parks and Recreate, or Parks Advisory Commission. We had representatives from the Bike Club, the walking groups. There, there were several organizations represented. I'm trying to think. I couldn't list them all for you, but I can get it to you.
So I guess my, I ask that because the ones that are integrating into neighborhoods, were the neighborhood associations participating?
The neighborhood, neighborhood associations were part of our outreach campaign. So I can't speak to the specific feedback we got, but yes, we did try to make sure to, every public engagement opportunity went out through our neighborhood engagement team.
And, and as, because this is a living document, I mean, I assume that whatever is, if it's for a specific neighborhood association, then they'll be, you know, invited to participate and encouraged to participate in multiple ways. Because some, I mean, you know, sometimes we get the letters in the water bill, but that's just not enough.
That's, that's true. And, and it's a great reminder to point out that, like, these are lines on a page. We see opportunity in these lines, but these are not like the, the design. So absolutely, on a, on a project-by-project basis, when we know that we're getting ready to flesh out what a trail will be in any given area, we absolutely will do a more direct, in-your-neighborhood, public engagement style.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I really like, and I'm very excited about this plan and the approach of kind of building off our strengths, the existing trails, and then kind of going from there. I think that I've, when my wife and I lived in Austin, I used to use what's now called Lady Bird Lake as a bike commuter into my downtown job and really enjoyed that. And had discovered right before internet, I'm sorry, interstate expansion here that my office was on, you know, my office at Baylor Law School was on, you know, a great river trail running loop that I started for a few months before it was interrupted, before now they've cut off the, and hopefully opening them back up soon again. But the, the river trail, including that old stretch that you mentioned, that's going to be totally revamped within the next few years. But the new buildout on the other side is great. And I've, I've run at the dam before, the dam trail is great, river and Riverwalk trails. Excited about Cotton Belt Expansion. I, I got to watch the MyWaco TV video where they just kind of ran camera along that because I'd never been out there to run before. And it was, it's a really great trail. And that was, I think, kind of a rails-to-trails.
Right.
Development. And excited about the prospect of some trails for the South Bagby, Sanderos Springs area coming online with a Flat Creek Trail there and some other kind of maybe trails connected to this off Chapel as well. So I think it, it's definitely exciting. I think, you know, it looks like we're, we're kind of proceeding in a really coherent way of trying to connect our major current trails now as we then move to kind of further build out. But keep up the good work. This is really exciting.
Thank you, Tom. Thanks for your leadership. And it's just so great to have you on the team and your visionary, again, leadership that has implemented this. And again, I think that's the word that comes to mind for this, it's visionary. I think that it is so consistent with where the city is headed to roll out a plan like this and really put pens to paper, not only envision, but also then in implementation. And it checks so many boxes. I think it is entertaining, it improves quality of life, it's good for public health. It's really exciting. So I'm very, really excited to get behind this and, and move forward. I applaud the community engagement. And as Councilmember Barfield said, I, I know that it'll be, we'll continue to, to talk to our community members, but appreciate that, the approach of bringing in our community to this process. And one of the things that, that I'm excited about too is really identifying small business and commerce and amenities along the way of these trails that when people are on walks or jogs or moving about, they can take advantage and, and stop into a shop and, and grab some food or retail or beverage or whatever. So I think it'll be a really cool way to connect commerce and local businesses to this as well. So I'm excited to see this come to be and really appreciate the work and look forward to seeing it be deployed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks.
All right. Tom's got another one because I'm just mean to him sometimes. Oh, Mayor wanted a break. That's right. Mayor, you still want the break here?
Is this a short one or is, if Tom's, it looks pretty short in slides.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've got 15 minutes on it.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm hoping.
I'm fine.
All right. We can go.
Okay. Well, that means Tom can stay seated. We've got a discussion and update on the Lions Park Improvement Project. If you've been driving by that site recently, you're, you've been watching a lot of changes. And Tom will walk us through that of what, the work that's been completed so far, as well as the process moving forward as we seek the public's help, help to reimagine the space. And the reason it's on the work session today is we do have a selection of a design consultant on your agenda this evening. So Tom, why don't you update us on Lions Park?
Absolutely. And also excited about this project. And thank y'all for your patience to hear me out for another presentation, but this update is good news. The overview really is just, just like City Manager Ford said, we're talking about what have we done to date, where are we now, and what do we have to look forward to? Don't forget, like, this is a local treasure. Seventy years ago, you know, Community Philanthropists, you know, an organization with community in its heart, developed this park on city land. And so we've been working with them to, to facilitate this transition. So that, that process began early last year, working with the Lions, I'm sorry, early, the, the prior year, working with the Lions to transition the management, get the fence secured around the site to allow the liquidation that they facilitated in storage of many pieces of equipment and materials. And then the environmental process, the permitting that led into the, the cleanup project that we've been most recently working on. So all that has transpired and the cleanup is complete as of November. We do expect, we have scheduled for the fence to come down on Tuesday. Interior mowing was completed today. And so Tuesday, the exterior mowing and the fence removal will be complete. And you'll be looking at a, a green 10-acre rectangle in, in the, the heart of Texas. So that, that's where we at, that's where we are at currently. What that looked like, these are some key images that kind of showed, we still had the remnants of a pool there, that a, a lot of remnants of concrete foundations, things like that. So we were really fortunate to get a good team in there that was able to pull the debris from the soil so that we can do something without running into a bunch of problems as we get into development. But also over 900 tires onsite, things like that. So we've, we've got things in a, in a nice, clean, stable condition with an open expanse of lawn. We expect the tree crew to get in there and lift the limbs a little bit. We're also very pleased about this, that the existing trees were protected well by our contractor through this phase. So it's kind of remarkable to stand in there and, and think about this open space that hadn't quite been open for 70 years. So we're excited to share that with the community starting Tuesday of next week. Come check it out. But leading into what's been going on in parallel to this is we've been not only building our community engagement database, we've had a lot of outreach heading in our direction. So everybody that we've had contact with, whether that's an inquiry or expression of interest in the project, we've been fleshing out our database of, of people that we're going to stay in touch with. We've also set up a steering panel that has helped us navigate into, make sure that we're thinking broadly enough as we select a consultant. So that's not to say, there, there really haven't been design discussions to date, but this team of county officials, Lions Club, Waco Foundation, Cooper Foundation, help us think from a how standpoint. How do we want to navigate this, this project design process and make sure that we build in the right engagement with the right team and the right tools? So they've been very gracious with their time in helping us kind of chart that course. And that led into, we, we put forth a request for qualifications for a design team that could bring the right toolkit to the table. And that included, again, specifically, we need robust community engagement, but also some creative problem solving. We need somebody that has a demonstrated body of work that, you know, they've brought a lot of creativity and good solutions to a, a wide range of, of communities. And so working through that, we, we are delighted to recommend for your approval in Resolution 2022-966 in agreement with OJB Landscape Architecture. They're going to take us into that first scope of services to kick off the community outreach, get some meetings put together, starting in early '23. So we envision a process that's no less than four public meetings. I think much of that will try to be hosted at the Lions Den and onsite to invite people out there to experience this 10 acres and, and really get the creative conversation going. And just as a visual stimulus, this is just excerpt of some of the imagery from their submission, but kind of starts to speak to that language of, they've, they've brought some common themes, but each site that they've crafted has kind of a tailor-made set of experiences to reflect the community they're working in. And that's what we were, that we were really tasked with, making sure that whatever the future of this site is, we don't know what those specifics may be because we haven't done the community engagement, but we know that it's going to have to be very representative of Waco and very visionary. So I think OJB is an easy recommendation for us, and we've had the pleasure of working with them. They're a subconsultant on the Riverwalk Redevelopment Project, and, and they've really demonstrated that, that that is part of their day-to-day design process. So we look forward to these next steps and we will be prepared to, to put forth a schedule and start announcing that to the, to the council and, and the public to come join us. And, and let's get this started in January and February '23. So again, I guess I got ahead of myself a little bit, but, you know, we, we see this as the initial phase of concept development to answer those key questions going forward of how do we prepare a budget for this project based on a scope that the community has defined? And so once we've established that scope through this first phase, we expect it to take no more than six months. We establish what the design scope is intended to be. We do a lot of cost exercising to identify, is that a single-phase project? Is that a multi-phase project? And how much fundraising are we, are we seeking at that point? And we do expect, like, with the amount of interest and outreach that we've had in this process so far, and the, the partners that we've been able to dialogue with along the way, we, we do envision there will be a lot of funding support for this project as well. So we look forward to getting to that point and, and bringing further updates. But with that, I'll open it up to any questions on Lions Park.
Questions?
Not really. Just, thank you for this update. It's, it's, it's great. The only other question, it just not popped in my head, is who is building the, in that area, the baseball fields? Is it us, the city, or is that McLennan County?
The, the baseball fields?
Yes.
That is, that is a city contract with Northridge Construction Group. Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I think this area is, is exciting because there's so much county, school district, and city reinvestment in this kind of large block that goes from Boski, New Road, Cobb's, and Lake Air. And so this is going to be kind of the, the garden spot of it all, the crown jewel there in terms of outdoor amenities. And I think this is, I, I really, it's an exciting kind of reinvestment in this area of town, but also to see Lions Park reimagined for future generations, I think, is, is just really exciting.
For those of us who experienced Lions Park in its glory, it's one of those things that it, as nostalgia, you drive by it and you remember, you know, what is probably now absolutely unsafe with that sliding thing, but never, we, we lived, we lived. But, you know, I mean, the pools in the summer and the birthday parties there, I mean, those are the things that set our childhood. And.
The train.
The train, you know?
Yeah.
And to know that, even when my, we were in Houston, we had fled to Waco in a hurricane, and I took my children to Lions Park. And that, that will become a part of somewhat, the next generation's story is incredible because it, it's set a tone for our childhood. And that it will live again is just incredible. So I'm grateful to all the parties involved.
That's right. That's right. That's what it's about. It's about creating memories. It's about building that culture and that community. Thanks for this, Tom. I, I look forward to seeing this through. I think that, again, the community engagement, I think this is going to be, sometimes we will host public meetings and we are really knocking on doors to try to get people to come. I think this is going to be one that people are going to really, be really excited to be engaged in. I think that people have strong opinions about Lions Park, and so I think that that's a good thing. We want to hear those and respond and build out the park that people want. So I think that this is going to be a really fun public engagement process for our team because of the, those high emotions that are driven by great memories of the past. And so looking forward to seeing the next steps get taken, which I guess is, the fence is coming down Tuesday. Is that what I heard?
That's right, Tuesday.
It's going to look great. So look forward to the, uh, hearing from the community. And we'll, we'll carry on until then.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Tom, if you want to stick around and make another presentation, you can.
Yeah.
I've got a Christmas special in five minutes.
Yeah, thanks. Appreciate it, though. Mayor, we do have a one final work session. It's Clint's discussion of public hearing items. Do you want to take that or are you?
Oh, yes, do it.
I mean, you mean we can't bump Clint again?
I mean, it would be the, like, the fourth meeting in a row.
We would not do that again, Clint.
Well, Clint, you, no reprieve today.
I made the cut.
You made the cut. You made the cut. Thank you, Clint. Peter, if anybody doesn't know Clint, he's a extraordinary planning director.
Thanks, brother.
Who has a, well, never mind. Go ahead, Clint.
Talk to me.
All right. So we just have one public hearing. This is a continuance of a public hearing from our 12-6 council meeting on a request for an alley abandonment for a segment of alley between Columbus and Jefferson across from the old Waco High redevelopment of apartments. The, the applicant, Bill Wedderman, owns the property on either side of this unbuilt alley and wants to consolidate that with their adjacent land for a future urban-scale development and is requesting the abandonment. We did continue it because this alleyway actually goes right to the back of a WISD storage building, and they use this access to access the back of that building. So we've been able to meet with officials from WISD over the past couple of weeks and come up with a solution that works for both the school district and the developer. And here, here's the alley we're talking about. And then there's a WISD building there. This is looking from 9th Street to the rear of the building. So the solution would be to, there is also an alley off of Columbus that can access the building. It does need to be cleaned up. There's some tree limbs in the way and some other obstructions, and it needs to be regraded. And so the original condition had a, or the original recommendation for plan commission did have a condition in there that an easement needed to be retained along that alleyway. And we are, staff is recommending a revised condition to include the cleanup of that alley off Columbus to allow access from Columbus to the back of the building. We originally looked at another option. We originally looked at another option, but the developer, Waco ISD was happy with both these options. The other one was to create a, a new easement that would align with some new driveways with the development. But after talking with the developer, they would prefer to improve the alley off Columbus and not have an easement in the property. And that is acceptable with the school district. So this is our revised conditions, and I believe there's, at your place with a updated ordinance with that condition included in it. And that is it.
Any questions? Great. Thanks, Clint.
There.
You got off light, Clint.
For future gen items? Tom, we will recess the work session, reconvene regular session for executive session as read to the record by the City Secretary at 4:33 PM.
Wow.
Briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, permit application to, for process, or for proposed landfill, Texas Commission on Environmental Quality Permit, Number MSW 2400, Real Property Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072, and Economic Development Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.078. We are now in executive session.